Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It looks like we have everybody in. Commissioners, you ready to start the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice this meeting was sent to the retrospect and is posted on the Bolton Board in Borough Hall and is also posted on our social media and website. The first item on the agenda is the public comment period. If there is anyone from the public that would like to speak with the commissioners about any topic at this time, now is your time. Please raise your hand so that we can do this in an orderly fashion. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the commissioners at this time? Okay, seeing them, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. The first item is to, we should have, there should be Kelsey Meeker. Are you here, Kelsey? There you are. Okay, so Kelsey is going to talk to us about an idea she has for a presentation for Veterans Day. So, Kelsey, why don't you go ahead and talk to the commissioners and walk through what you would like to do?
Hi, my name is Kelsey Meeker. I'm a junior at the high school. This is my mom Danielle. And we'd like to propose a military banner program to hang banners on King's Highway for Veterans Day. We think this is a good idea because we saw a friend in North Jersey who did this with her town and it looked like a great idea. My great grandfather, my mom's grandfather fought in World War II and I'm sure a lot of other families in town have similar connections and so it's important to honor their service. It's also a way for local families to honor their, honor veterans that they know and there could also be an educational component of this. If they're like walking field trips downtown or if kids are just walking around town with their parents and can look at all the different banners. So in order to do this, we would need to determine how many banners could be included based on how many like lamp posters are and how many banners could be hung on each one. We would also need to choose a size and style of the banner. We have an example here. This is the most common size. It is 24 by 48 inches. And it, as you can see, it's just a picture of a veteran and it has his name. And so if this were to be approved, everybody who ordered one would order the same size. We would also need to determine the pricing based on whether or not there's like a fundraiser aspect of this or if money would need to go to the setup of these banners. And the payment would be collected by the town. And then the town would pay for the banners ordered on the website. And then this would also need to be advertised somehow and by doing so, residents who wanted to participate would be provided with a link where they can customize their banner with a picture and the name of a veteran they would like to honor. And then lastly, the banners would be delivered and then hung. So this is just a basic overview. And more logistics would need to be figured out if this was approved, but hopefully this was a good summary. We're happy to answer any questions and appreciate the consideration.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Maybe just a statement. Hi, Kelsey. My name is Frank Troy. I'm one of the commissioners and I'm a former naval officer, so I really greatly appreciate this initiative. I used to live in Baltimore and cover a territory in Pennsylvania. A lot of towns in Pennsylvania do this, so I really like, I think it's called hometown heroes if memory serves correct. So it's a great, personally, I think it's a great initiative. And I asked members of the American Legion to attend tonight, Lisa Quancy and David Tardidi, because I thought maybe that instead of, you know, having to set up a, you know, a a, you know, a charity or, you know, a tax-free organization, perhaps there could be some overlap with the American Legion where they could, you know, partner and, you know, kind of help, you know, help this process because there already are established charitable organizations. So I would love to maybe hear some input from my fellow commissioners and from the American Legion as well.
Yeah, and I think Frank, and this is Kevin, Kelsey, great presentation. I appreciate your initiative on this. One of the questions that I had as you were going through, and I think I addressed this kind of earlier, you know, the challenge would be, I think, kind of driving it and what, what the partnership relationship between the borough and this initiative would be. And I think as Frank said, having, having an established organization like the American Legion certainly helps because as a 501(c)(3), there's some documentation and things that need to be accomplished with that. You know, I love the idea and I think in terms of the initiative, from our perspective of what, you know, Department of Public Works, what they do currently for organizations and hanging flags for special situations, why not honor our veterans as well? So I appreciate the initiative and idea. Thank you.
And Kelsey and Danielle, I'll add, this is, this is Colleen Bianco-Bazic, so thank you so much for your idea and I apologize in advance for the poor quality of my audio and video tonight because we're having construction go on in my house. So I apologize if I'm difficult to hear or see, but please don't let that detract from how much I appreciated this idea. I think it's wonderful. I have two grandparents that served and it would be amazing for my mom and myself to participate in something like this. Two Purple Heart veterans in our family. And so I think this is wonderful and I'm happy to hear my fellow commissioners support this concept as I know I do. The first question I had, I know Commissioner Troy just mentioned it's popular in Pennsylvania. Do you happen to know the name of the town or towns in North Jersey where it's currently done so we could call up there and maybe talk to them as well?
Sure. So the idea came from our friends in Wyckoff, New Jersey.
Okay, great.
And I believe too, we can, we can get other names for you as well because there's a link that just gives some examples of some other towns too, so we could easily send that information to you and you can contact those other towns as well, but Wyckoff was one of them.
Thank you. And I guess I'm always one to anticipate problems unfortunately because they seem to befall much of what we do even with good intentions. So have you heard anything at all about a community where maybe there was a request for more flags than we had or they had posts for or more flags than they had capacity for or how that was addressed?
I haven't heard anything about that. I'm sure it's possible. One of the possible solutions to that would be to hang two flags on each pole because you can get different sizes. So instead of doing, you know, 24 by 48 for each flag, a possibility would be to get smaller flags and then hang two on each of the poles instead.
That's great. Okay, that's a really good idea. Thank you. I don't have any further questions. I really appreciate the time and effort that you put into the presentation and and the concept itself. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, did you want to say something from American Legion side?
Hi, I'm Dave Tardidi. I'm a past commander of the post and a resident of Haddonfield for last 1981. There's a couple of concerns I have is if you have a banner, it's more of a vertical banner, isn't it?
I'm sorry, it's more of a...
Isn't it a vertical banner type thing?
It is.
It is, okay. And is the picture on both sides or one side?
It's just on one side. I can show you the back. So there's, there's various designs that you can order. So the picture is on the one side. And then on the back, you have the option for various sayings. So this one says, "To all of our veterans and active duty military, thank you." And then it has the borough of Haddonfield. But, you know, there's, there's various designs that you could have.
Okay, because I was thinking if you had an excess number, could you do them back to back?
You know, that's, that's a great question and that's something that we could certainly look into.
Well, it looks like it's going to have to have some kind of horizontal pole coming out from the lamppost.
Yeah, Dave, I'm familiar with this. I've seen it in multiple places. Langhorne, Pennsylvania does it, Westfield, New Jersey. And I actually did, actually have connection with someone who organized it over in West, in Langhorne, Penn, not Langh, yeah, Langhorne, Pennsylvania. The apparatus to hang the banner is a ring that goes, two rings that go around the pole and basically a peg that slips in. There's a, am I right, Kelsey? There's a, like, like a curtain. There's a little pocket in top and bottom, so it, it doesn't blow in the wind. It stays kind of vertical.
Correct.
Yeah. So it, you probably wouldn't be able to get two because you only have that one unless you were able to figure out two on a pole, but I've only ever seen the one. Could be something that we rotate, you know, if we did it one year and you could rotate or there might be other places besides downtown to display them if we were to get additional, you know, more than we could have capacity for on King's Highway or wherever. And thank you, Kelsey. I think it's a wonderful initiative. I've seen it many places and I've often thought, goodness gracious, it's such a, it's a beautiful thing for acknowledgement and education purposes. It's, it's great for people to look and learn and, you know, go back in history and see where we, where we've been, who've gotten us here.
So Commissioners, I have two comments. The first one is that, you know, we do have King's Highway, but we also have the entranceway from Potter and Ellis. We have Grove Street. We have Tanner Street. We also, not right away, but at some point in time in the future, anticipate having the lanterns all the way down Haddon Avenue. So you will have that entire stretch also at some point in time in the future potentially. You know, so that, that does give you ways to expand the program after the initial entrance to it potentially. And the second comment I would make is as you, because we do have a very active American Legion post in town, you know, my question would be, would you be honoring those folks that live in town or are you giving people an opportunity that live in town whose relatives don't live in town or are no longer with us to, you know, put their images up also? So you would want to make that decision before you move forward as to how you would, who's going to be eligible to participate in this program?
And I think that's a great question for the town and perhaps that'll be determined by the number that we're able to accommodate. I know in a lot of towns, what they've done is they, it's not just the the veterans who live in the town. It's often the residents who live in the town and they're honoring a family member who perhaps doesn't live in the town or who is no longer with us. And it's just a way to honor them, but it's the town residents who have that connection to that veteran.
Maybe this could be made available to residents in the public in general that they may want to have that kind of thing at their own house. A lot of houses have, you know, porch posts, stuff like that and they could have that there or put it on the farther house near the front door to do that kind of thing. And the question is, is, is can we get perhaps somewhat of a better purchase price if we opened up that way and started with people having their houses? Or maybe just a limited number, a first year or so, and see if people would want to do that kind of thing and then we could purchase it. We could probably get it purchased through the American Legion post and do it that way, but we have to have somebody pay for it.
And in terms of, and in terms of pricing, do you want to see, how much was this one?
This one was $99, but they range from 69 to, I believe, $139. But depending on the time of year and the quantity that they're ordered in, there can be some discounts through the site potentially.
Thank you.
And so I guess the question is, and it's almost, it's, it's two-part. Number one, would the, would the American Legion be willing to, I guess, help facilitate with that order if in terms of using the 501(c) for the ordering? Kelsey, I think from, from your standpoint, is it kind of helping create and manage an order sheet that would then be turned in with, with monies and orders? And then from the borough's standpoint, it's about kind of honoring or putting that action into place to be honored along the, the main corridors. Is that, is that kind of how it is envisioned in a nutshell?
Yeah, so, yeah. So if it was an arm with the, you know, where the money could then be sent in. So yeah, there's a link that the residents would use to upload the photos and all the information. The person who's ordering has to then pay, you know, whomever we decide and then the money is sent in from that organization. The order is never paying directly to this website, but they're doing all the ordering on their own online. So the borough or the American Legion doesn't have to worry about collecting pictures or, you know, inputting the information. That's all done by the person who's ordering.
So let me just double check. So the, the individual deciding to place this order for the, for the flag honoring their either child, parent, deceased member who served, they're doing all the pay, they're all doing all the ordering, but the payment would go through the American Legion? Is that what I'm saying? And then Mary Lee would like basically cut a whole check for the totality of it?
Correct.
Okay, Dave, so I'll just ask Dave real quick. Dave, is that, that's obviously something we would have to bring up in the March 1 meeting, yeah?
That's correct.
Because that, yeah, that would just, I mean, really, it's just a bookkeeping question at that point, right? They would be writing a check directly to the American Legion and then the American Legion would pay the totality at, you know, whatever the cutoff date is.
Well, that, that, it's, I think there's, there's two sides to it. One is if a person wants one for their house, stuff like that, we, we, I'm not sure if we can actually put it through to save the sales tax on it. Maybe the handling, but because most charitable organizations or tax exempt organizations can't do things just to enable the, the public to save money pure by itself. This has to really be a thing that, it sounds like a neat thing for the borough to endorse this program and that might make it work. They wouldn't have to have any financial obligation to do that unless they want to, but it could be, you know, it's like people sending something for a person that passed away in the obituary, you know, that's that kind of thing. It's just a pass through to a charity and maybe we could form a charity to oh, I'd say, let's say, we, we do have a last, we have a couple of things to do for our deceased veterans and one is an annual dinner. Okay, at Tavistock and it's a break even type thing, you know, whatever Tavistock's charged in, since we charge people to speak up. And that, and then, then we do a roll call of people that have passed away in the last year at that dinner. It's a very moving ceremony and I believe the commissioners have always been invited to it. Sharon, you can confirm that, I think. And so and that's coming up, April, this, the first Tuesday in April. We moved the back of the date so it does not conflict with the NCAA last game of basketball in the big tournament, so.
It has for many years, Dave.
You know, I know. It wasn't easy for me to get this thing changed, let me tell you, because the charter said the first Monday. I said that's, it was done in 1940, which was before they had TV or NCAA or anything. As in times have changed, we've got to move it next door because at eight o'clock, a lot of guys start bailing onto the dinner. And it makes it very depressing. So we got that changed to Tuesday night.
And we appreciate that. So why don't I, just to try and get us moving along, Lisa and Dave, why don't you and I set up a meeting with Kelsey and her mom and we can try and hash this out and then figure out what's the best way to move forward? Does that make sense?
That's a good idea. It really is, Sharon, because we had need something, we have to have sort of a proposed package to take to our board for them to approve it or maybe enhance it or maybe say just, this is out of our league. So we could all get together somewhere informally. Wear our masks and do it that way.
Okay. Then I will, then I will reach out to the four of you and try and get something set up fairly soon. And then we can come back and I can update the commissioners on what's going on.
Fine, Sharon. Thank you very much.
All right. Commissioners, anything else on that before we move on?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Good night. Thanks for serving, Commissioners. I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, Dave. Thank you, Lisa, for being here.
You're welcome.
Bye, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Good night.
Okay, moving on to the next thing. We have a long list of borough property and event uses. The first one is Recess, New Jersey. They are asking for space March 28th through May 13th, June 27th through June 30th. Deanna, they, you had reached out to Bob in the space or they were working with, I don't know, that was a different, that's working with soccer. Deanna, did you reach out and confirm the space was available?
Um, I thought they were the ones that were reaching out to, with soccer.
No, that's not soccer. Was it?
No, it's a healthy running.
Yeah, that's very healthy. Um, I'm sorry, I thought I had, I'll have to double check.
They were using, weren't they using one of the parks instead?
Correct, you're right. They're the ones using the top of Wheeler Park.
And they were okay with continuing to use that?
There's no other choices. Okay, I did reach out to Bob, yes. On that, as soon as you said, using that other one. Yes, I did reach out to Bob and that is the only opening that they have.
So Commissioners, are you okay with them continuing to use Wheeler Park for that time period?
I'm okay with it. I don't see any, any other issues really associated with that.
Frank and Colleen, you good?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. The next one is PPH and Environmental Commission for Earth Day. The event, obviously, as in years past, would, would be at King's Court. They are anticipating two to five vendors with pop-up tents, tables and chairs, hours to be determined. They, I know they have not developed, in the last environmental commission meeting, they had not really finalized their program and what was going on, so they don't have their hours yet. Michael, you are here, I assume, to input some information on that?
Yes, that's correct. Good evening, everyone. So the Environmental Joint Committee just formed a environmental committee and I, as well as one of our professionals on the PPH, wanted to have a pop-up event on Earth Day as a way of educating the public about the plastic van that's going into place. For anyone who doesn't know, May 4th is the start of a law that prohibits all stores, including retailers, from having plastic bags in their store. And so we wanted to utilize King's Court on Earth Day as a means of distributing New Jersey sanctioned bags to the general public as a way of building awareness and to encourage the use of these bags going forward. The hours that we're currently looking at is somewhere between 12 and 5, but we may shorten that depending on how the, just depending on the weather, but we really think 12 and 5 would probably be ideal considering the hours for retailers.
Yeah, and just for everybody, the 22nd is a, is a Friday. You know, my, my first concern with this was, you know, I went right to when, when does the farmer's market start or what happens with that? So again, you know, 12 to 5 on the Friday, now I, it's, it's good for traffic to, to be able to hand those things out, so I didn't see an issue with it. I think if it was on Saturday, I think it'd probably something, I'd be a little more cautious, but I'm okay.
Kevin? I'm sorry, Colleen.
No, I was just going to say, I think this is great. I wish, I'm excited to have Michael on board to be able to build the capacity to do this type of thing and I know the committee, the joint committee, put a lot of thought and was, you know, tried to be careful and thoughtful about when and how they were doing it and I think it would be great for foot traffic, good buzz, good for the environment, great educational piece and so I'm, I'm all for it. I think it'll be the first of hopefully a lot of fun pop-up type events that we can offer residents and businesses.
My comment was just going to be, I would anticipate that there will be further stuff coming from the Environmental Commission for Earth Day as itself, because they do have activities that they also have to plan just in addition to this. So that will be something in addition to what Michael is proposing here.
And I just want to add that one of the things that we're also doing is we're having a Zoom call inviting all the retailers and business owners in Haddonfield next Monday to sort of make them aware of this plastic van if they're not already aware and to utilize the downtown Haddonfield website as a source for means and resources for them to, to, you know, gather the appropriate resources to adapt to this new law. So the, the main reason why we're doing this is obviously education, but we want to make sure that the businesses in downtown Haddonfield are in compliance with this new plastic van. That's our first and foremost mission.
Okay, we all in agreement that they can move forward on that date? Yep, yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is the Friends of the Indian King Tavern. They are, would like to hold a speaker series on the Revolutionary War in the Borough Hall Auditorium. They're looking at April 6th and May 4th and it would be 6:30 to 9:00 PM. And I know we have Joe Murphy with us here to answer any questions you may have.
I, I don't know if I'm going to actually ask a question. I'd rather make a statement. I mean, the difficulty I think right now that we have to discuss is the fact that we don't have Borough Hall open for meetings, nor is it open for other activity. And I think that's probably a discussion that we, we need to have as a, as a group to discuss when we would be opening. And if anyone wants to add to that, but you know, we're, we're all here on a Zoom, not really by choice. But so that's, that's where I see the dilemma at, at this point. I'd rather not say yes just yet, Joe. Although I would love to, to attend these events. I really enjoyed the Revolutionary War. But, you know, that's, that's the dilemma that we've got at this point.
And if I could just, because of course, everyone here is acutely aware of what we've gone through and we've done a fair amount of contingency planning and we have to proceed on the basis that by the time we get to each of these events, we'll be able to do this. If not, clearly then we'd have to change our plans. So I think what we'd be looking for is really more of a contingency approval that yes, if, if it can be done, you would agree to it. But obviously, we can't, we can't change things like the pandemic. It's just a matter of planning, understanding that there's that contingency.
Joe, how many people do you think you would get to one of these events?
Um, it's very hard to predict. When we did this in 2019 and we had Gary Stone giving a talk prior to the skirmish, we filled the auditorium in the, on the second floor. We had about 100 people. But I think that's the max. And of course, we have a list of speakers. Some are going to be better known than others. Some of the topics are stronger than others. And by the way, we're doing a series of about six or seven and for the other dates, we're using the Masonic Temple.
Joe, can I ask a quick question? Are these, are you going to be using like an electronic ticketing system so you can sort of have a sense of crowd control, if you will, or, or attendees in advance?
Right now, we're not planning to charge for admission or attendance. Right now, we're not planning to charge for admission or attendance.
Oh, no, not charging, but just like Eventbrite or something else that would, so people would have to sign up even if there's no fee, so we would know an approximate count, or you would know an approximate count?
No, we really hadn't planned on that, and we've really not done it for anything else that we've done. And as the example with Gary Stone, we work with the Historical Society to promote it. I would like to say that I'm, I'm very concerned about us being overwhelmed by people who are interested in learning and studying history. But I'm not terribly afraid that that's going to happen. So I, I don't think we're going to be overwhelmed by the numbers. I think we'll be working hard to draw people out.
You know, Joe, one of the options may be to, you know, if, if we are not back inside yet, is to maybe hold something at like Centennial Field and, and maybe have some, some tents or something.
Yeah, we, I, I think that's right. It could be done outside. We could just, we might have to do it on a smaller basis for other facilities in town that we could use. But they would hold smaller numbers. For example, the library would be a possibility, Historical Society, the Indian King, but that's, that's limited to about 40 some. So there would be some fallback options in that regard, just all less desirable.
So commissioners, I think what Joe is asking is if we are back open on those two dates, would you be willing to allow them to use the facilities to hold this event if we're back open?
Do we, do we know what days of the week they are, Joe? I'm sorry, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
They're all Wednesdays because we, we were told in no uncertain terms that that's the one day of the week when you don't have to worry about sports activities.
Oh, okay.
We do have, we have people with children who are part of our group.
The only other thought I have is those are the first Wednesdays, so would HPC be scheduled to meet?
No, HPC is the third Wednesday, I believe.
Oh, did they change?
Planning Board's the first Tuesday.
And that means the third to, the, the third Tuesday, okay.
Right.
I'm just making sure. I don't want to get accused by the Historical Commission, the HPC, of kicking them out for a historic presentation here.
Yeah, no, they're, they're usually two weeks before Planning Board, so they're the end of the month.
That's right, Sharon. Okay.
Philip did check to make sure that there were no conflicts.
Thank you, Philip. Okay, great.
And I should mention with me, I have Philip Sobish, who is the chief town crier, and Roger Jacobs, who is responsible for safety and security for the skirmish event.
Thank you both for being here to support Joe. Okay, so we're asking for essentially, assuming we are open to the public, would we be willing to permit two talks in the lead up to the skirmish as hosted or organized by Friends of the Indian King on Wednesday, April 6th, from approximately 6:30 to 9:00, and then Wednesday, May 4th, from approximately 6:30 to 9:00? Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, I guess the, the conditional argument, Joe, is, is the if then. I would say if we decide that we are open, I would be open to, to granting that. And, and that's a strong yes, I think, as mentioned, you know, clearly with, with COVID and things like that. We need to, we need to discuss that longer. And then I think, you know, the second discussion is going to be masks. You know, we're still, we're still requiring masks of vaccinated people. And, and that's something that, you know, again, preferences aside, but I, I had the pleasure of watching the school board. I think that's an active discussion at various meetings. So, you know, again, I go back to the conditional argument, if then. So, you know, if we open and there are limitations or, or things that we need to have put in place, then I'd be okay with it. It's a definitely maybe, how's that?
Well, we're certainly committed to following whatever the requirements are.
I appreciate.
That's sort of why I asked the ticketing question, right? Because, you know, I'm still in the contact tracing possibility world of if we have 100 people, let's say, on the upside that this is a wonderful speaker so many of us are attracted to, and we want to come out and get out with friends and neighbors after all these months of mostly staying inside. I, I know I urged with the partnership in prior times, you know, if you're going to do any indoor networking at any time that people are comfortable with it, it still would be great to do some sort of tracking or RSVP system, just because again, then contact tracing is a lot more favorable, because again, we're a public entity, not a special interest or another type of nonprofit group. So that, that was one reason I asked that question. So maybe what we could do, commissioners, is give a estimate to Joe, Phil and Roger as to, Philip and Roger as to, by this date, we will hopefully have made a decision. I don't know if that's March, if that, what your thoughts are, but this way they're also not left in the dark sort of waiting indefinitely for us.
And I'm, I'm good with that. I think, you know, if the first week of, of March, is that too, too late?
No, I, I think we can, I think we can work with that. We'll be, we have to promote this, we'll be advertising it, all of that type of thing. But if we have to make a change, we'll, we'll make a change. But just so you see, when you see our promotion and advertising activity, I don't want you to think you're, we're ignoring what you said. We have, we have to give people a location. But if we have to change it, we'll, we'll change it.
I appreciate that.
Philip, you need to unmute.
Can we have it, can we have it on the steps of Borough Hall then? If we can't go inside?
And then where would your people be? So they're gonna be on the sidewalk, or would we then try and shut down that, that?
No, not shutting down the street, but they'll rough it. I don't know. I just wondered.
I'm just thinking 100 people, you, you don't have room for 100 people there. That's why I'm asking. That's why I suggested maybe Centennial Field or Crows Woods or something, you know? I was actually thinking of Centennial Field because the speaker could almost actually stand on the raised section of the hill and the chairs, you know, be facing that direction. Of course, I'm not sure, we want chairs on Centennial right now, but.
Well, how about if we, we kind of just think through this and at our next commissioners' meeting, which is two, wait, where are we? Two weeks away?
We have a regular commissioner meeting on the 28th.
Yeah, maybe we just have, we revisit this at that time. If we feel comfortable making a decision, then great. If not, as Kevin's point, we get back to Joe, Philip and Roger by the first week of March. And with that, if there's any other locations in the meantime that you all would be open to that the borough owns, please share that with Sharon. And then when we have our next commissioners' meeting, she can, she can also, or you're welcome to come to that, but just to put in front of us alternatives if for some reason we don't go with the indoor option, I'm happy to consider that as well.
I would say, Colleen, we, we can't, we can't plan, in other words, doing something outside is not a positive alternative to Borough Hall. It's not as if we could come back to and say, oh, forget it, we don't need the approval for Borough Hall, we're gonna do it outside. It's more, do we have a contingency? And so what, what I would like to see, the, the kind of contingent approval. And whatever time it is that you have to do a make or break decision, we'll be able to change our advertising, change what promotion we're doing. But we do need to start promoting what we're going to be doing, and we do want to have, be able to list the locations, even if we have to change them afterward. By the way, we can't hold off on the promotion and advertising too much longer. So it would really be, it would work best for us. It would work contingent, and we're certainly happy with that and understand that completely. And if there's anything else you would like us to do, for example, if I understand your point about tracing and knowing who's coming. And, and by the way, we're co-sponsoring this with Camden County College Professor Jack Pesta and some faculty members there. So we have to discuss with them, but could we, would it make sense for us to have a system where people RSVP, they don't have to pay, but they register in advance? So we know who they are and that they're going to be there. And then when we have it, if more people show up, we can always have them sign in and register them, the additional people. So we have a record exactly along the lines that you've suggested.
I, I think that would work out best, just, I mean, I, I mean, if you look at the trends that, you know, over the last month, fortunately, cases are down about, you know, 80% or so, so hopefully that path will continue. And, you know, but if you use an Eventbrite or, you know, another way of, of tracking it, if you do have to, if we see a spike or there, there's something that takes place that has to change it, you at least have the contact information for all those people. So it's very easy to reach them and say that, you know, now it's a Zoom meeting or, or it's something else where it kind of allows you to, to put in place quickly that contingency plan.
Yeah, that's a great point, Commissioner.
Okay.
All right.
So commissioners, what I got from what Joe's saying, he's asking, because they want to start advertising. So are you okay with them to start advertising saying it will be in the Borough Hall Auditorium, knowing that you guys can change your mind at some point and tell them no? Joe, am I right? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, I personally am okay with that.
So here's, here's my issue with that. And, and Joe, please know, I, I would love to support this, and I'm hopeful I am able to. The minute we see the skirmish begin to advertise that they're hosting a 100 or a 50-person event in Borough Hall, every single organization in Hadden Field is going to say, when can we host our events in Borough Hall? And I don't have an answer for them yet. I don't know that we, we obviously as commissioners haven't made that decision yet. So I get totally what Joe is asking. I'm not comfortable saying yes and starting to promote indoor activities at Borough Hall until we as commissioners say that all activities, because I don't want to get accused of favoring one org over the other, or one resident over another. And I, I want to be able to answer Roger, if the 65 Club wants to host Tai Chi indoors and have us move the chairs, you know? So not being facetious at all, I just anticipate, you know, I see Bethany is on the line from, from the retrospect. The next question we're gonna get when we open is
Are you open?
Open to the public or the press? When? And, and what, you know, can we get in? I don't have that answer yet because we haven't had that conversation.
Yeah, I, I'm not, and Joe, I appreciate it. I'm not comfortable saying, yes, I, I feel like actually the way the question is, is phrased is that it's putting you into a corner of, hey, can we advertise and then change it later? You know, I would, I would rather have it advertised at another location and then use, use Borough Hall as a, as a backup if and when we agree to, to allow individuals there. I mean, whereas, I, I guess the question that I would put back to you is, is what were your, what are your desired locations versus what are your, in, in terms of order? You had Borough Hall and what else?
Well, we used, we were looking at the two largest ones that we had available. Also the Masonic Temple, and the Masonic Temple was taken on the two days that we were looking for a hall. And of course, we had a good experience with it when we had Gary Stone speaking there. We have thought about other locations. Mostly, they're smaller. The ones I mentioned before, the library, the Historical Society, you just can't get the same numbers there.
Right. Okay. Okay. I, yeah, I, I don't feel comfortable giving a, a yes, even though it's conditional. I thought it was a, you know, if we open it. And I'd like to get back to you in two weeks.
Okay, one, one other question though. If, if we leave it like in a dance, I'll put it this way, have we, have we staked our claim? So once you make the decision, will we be first in the line? Or will it start anew from the time you make your decision?
I think by having this recorded meeting, you are staking your claim as right of first refusal. How's that?
And I, I would go so far as to tell Deanna to, to make a note on the calendar that there's a tentative, you know, conditional approval pending, you know, whatever it is, it checked back in two weeks. But yeah, we, to my knowledge, no one else has, has requested those dates, Joe, for, no one has requested indoor use of the building in, in a while, quite, quite frankly. So you are first in line, first in time, I would say on this for sure. And I'm, I'm happy to, yes, during the recorded meeting, say that you would have first dibs, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on. Next item is the Healthy Kids Running Series. They are asking for Sundays in May and the first half of June from 3:00 to 7:00 P M. at Crows Woods, and they have been working with soccer to ensure that there's no conflicts with soccer. This is another one of those, they come to us every twice a year, I believe, asking for permission.
I'm okay with that. I think, I think we went through this, you know, like literally this summer, six, eight months ago.
Yep.
Assuming they've worked out all the conflicts, then I'm fine.
Okay.
Agreed. Thank you.
All right, next one. Mayor, this is your Wellness Day kickoff. You want to give a little more details rather than what I wrote down?
Sure, sure. And thanks to Joanna for working with me on this. So essentially, we have never been a participant in the, in the New Jersey State Health Quality Organization's Mayor's Wellness Campaigns. I'm doing that, and I'm also honoring my own 40th birthday this year, because it's the year that as a woman, you start getting lots of tests that you're not necessarily looking forward to. So we've had communications with a number of providers in town, we being me, and Joanna has started being looped into this. There are a number of resources available to us, everything from a Red Cross blood drive to allowing for blood pressure screenings and access to different practitioners such as, you know, not just physicians or nurse practitioners, but actually holistic wellness. And so what we have also done is initiated communication with Camden County and talked to them. They are going to be making the entire month of May, ideally, if all goes well, a wellness-themed month. April, they're focusing on Earth Day and environmentalism. March, they're focusing on women's history. May, they would like to actually piggyback off of my thought process for this. So we're even looking at, for the partnership, for example, during the month, doing a healthy eating week, right, where the restaurants, whether it's lunch, dinner, food or beverage would buy in, tie in what they offer, retailers who carry, you know, athletic clothing and things like that. Anyone who's, who can tie their business to, or their practice to wellness, we would be looking to celebrate them during the month of May. So Joanna and I, in our communications, and looking through all the nonprofit orgs and their calendar events, calendar of events, excuse me, came up with May 7th, which is Mother's Day weekend, it's a Saturday, and so it would essentially be a day that we would ideally shut down a large portion of, or part of Kings, or all of Kings Highway so that we could have mobile health screenings and access to various health and wellness vendors, et cetera. If, if I have my druthers, we're gonna have, you know, yoga in the street in the morning and a 5K that, you know, Kevin and Frank can compete in. And, you know, all that good stuff. So we're, we're trying to shape up the month. This would be the kickoff within Hadden Field for wellness. And it's not just limited to me. This is building off of the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, because there's lots of resources and grant dollars for future years if we buy into this. And I will note, it also contributes to our sustainable certification process, because health and wellness is a component of that. So that's really important and builds off of what Michael proposed for Friday and April for Earth Day. Joanna, did, do you want to add anything?
You and I are gonna have a quick meeting tomorrow to discuss moving forward, but you've touched on everything. All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Frank, what's your five K time?
Like twenty years ago, I would say.
Yeah. Um, no, I, uh, no questions. I think, you know, I've heard, uh, heard discussions about this and, and I think it's a great, it's a great idea. Again, promoting, you know, healthy lifestyles, both mentally and physically, energetically, it's, you know, it, it makes sense.
Okay. All right, moving on. Um, we've had the Friends of the Indian King Tavern back, um, for the skirmish. It's June fourth. The, uh, you know, the annual shooting of the muskets is, is projected for two PM in front of Borough Hall as usual. But I do believe that they are planning to make this much bigger uh, than they have in the past and that with a separate clash in front of the Masonic Lodge, which I believe they are working out the details with the police department on, on carrying that out. Um, and I know they are looking at some other events throughout town also. I don't know, Philip, you're still on and Roger, you're still on. I don't know if you want to add more to that. Um, if there's anything else in addition that they will need or you're going to be looking for?
I don't think we needed the borough for anything else. The, uh, the, the street needs, King's Highway needs to be closed from around twelve forty-five until three because we're going to have the yelling contest and the mustering of, of the kids. And, and of course, the skirmish, and then we have to have time to clean up after the skirmish to make sure that there's no problems.
Philip, is this like from King's Highway from Grove up to?
Up to Haddon.
Okay.
And then it needs to be closed at eleven o'clock for the clash. And that's going to be just from Patco to, uh, just, just past the, the, um,
To Tanner?
No, not all the way to Tanner.
Chestnut Street there?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And that's just for about forty-five minutes. It's a short clash. It's just to bring people up to the businesses that are that end of town.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Um,
We're also trying to set up a meeting with Chief Lou Fontino, uh, from the Fire Hall and Police Lieutenant Stephen Camus Gioli, who's already reached out to us. Try to do that meeting jointly so we can coordinate both the police and the fire. And we have a black powder expert. So we're in good shape for the cannon here.
Great.
We have a cannon this year?
The cannon.
Yes.
West Jersey Artillery.
They were at the two thousand nineteen, uh, skirmish and it worked just fine. They, they do like a quarter charge.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with it. I, I think this year I'm hoping you have, have the best turnout yet. So I'm, I'm okay. I don't have any questions at this time. I know the public safety has been coordinating with you, Philip, so I'm excited to hear more.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I guess my, my only question would be just in, in terms of, of, you know, staggering the, the shutdown of, of these certain areas. Just is it, is it easier to just kind of keep it uniform or?
Well, they're, they're spread out by three hours.
Yeah, okay.
Eleven o'clock and two o'clock. So it doesn't make sense to close it down the whole time in between. And certainly not the upper part where.
Okay. My, my concern though is if, if you need the, if you need King's Highway cleared from, from parking, I mean, we'll just make sure that we have, you know, that there's no parking for that day, but, um, I just don't want.
Well, on King's Highway, it's going to Borough Hall, we're going to be asking them to put covers on the meters at midnight beforehand because we can't have any cars that park there in the morning and then they don't leave.
Right.
You know, by two o'clock. So parking, we want to shut down at midnight beforehand.
Okay.
But to Kevin's point, are you going to ask for parking to be shut down at midnight up by the Masonics Lodge?
We hadn't, we hadn't thought about that. We, no, I don't, so.
I think Steve, that's part of what Lieutenant Camasholi is going to be working out too. So Commissioners, also if you have any questions that you want answered about parking, traffic flow, all that, please feel free to, to reach out to Lieutenant. Um, he's the expert. I, I always defer to him on these type of events because he thinks through all those type of issues like the parking overnight and then how the traffic flow will work. And he does a good job of coordinating with, um, with Patco and, and the county for closures. So, so.
The clash is going to be about half the size of the skirmish or quarter or third in size, much smaller.
Okay. Okay. I'm okay with it.
Any questions, Commissioners? Okay. You good to move forward with that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Philip. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next one on the agenda is Celebrations Association. We actually have three of them on here. So we'll just kind of go through them all. You have July third and fourth. July third is the fireworks. They're asking for King's Highway to be shut down from five PM to eleven PM with no rain date. Uh, I'm assuming Mayor that this is their planning on going back to what they had a number of years ago where this would be activities on the highway in addition to the, um, fireworks at some point, um, which I believe they're doing earlier.
Yes, that would be correct.
The home to bed.
Yes, so that would be correct. No rain date for the fireworks. That's the way they've structured the contract with the Pyrotechnic, um, company. And I believe that at this point in time, they're optimistically looking forward to, um, I should say, we, we are optimistically looking forward to being able to do the Yankee Doodle Do um, activities in addition to the parade as well. So July third and July fourth itself, right? We have them all. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. July third, fourth. And then October thirtieth, Halloween, obviously. Um, and I think, you know, I can speak for liaising with PFH and you know, and Sharon knows this as well. We are trying really hard to also coordinate as Joanna with the other borough organizations and the PFH so that the businesses are made more aware earlier in advance, given opportunities to participate. We've logged a number of complaints over the years, overall super positive experience, especially for the residents and out of towners that come. But, you know, we've had some complaints when we did the, the rides and the blowups the first year and we had some food truck involvement. There were some food and beverage and some retailers that were unhappy with things. So we've tried to address that and I think going forward, make it as positive for everybody as, as we can. And we're hopeful this will be even bigger than last year. And with fireworks, again, we will consult with Chief Fontino, um, Joe and Ernie, um, for our fire officials. Um, and then Public Safety Chief Cutler is on if he wants to add anything. Um, but again, Lieutenant Camasholi will help us with the street shutdowns too.
Commissioners, are there any questions on those three items?
Nope.
Okay. We're good to move forward with authorizing those.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, celebrations. Oh, and we did forget one fourth one for celebrations, which is the annual tree lighting and Santa Parade. I'm assuming we're okay for that one also.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, we need one note, Sharon and Joanna, and I made this note, but we need, um, better lighting and a PA. Or, or I can bring my son's karaoke machine, but, um, I, that was the one thing that, um, we noted in our notes to always be improving. Uh, we, we were without this year. So for Santa Parade, we'll try to get that under control.
Okay, um, the last item is the farmer's market. Uh, they're asking to use King's Courts for their twenty twenty-two season. They have not submitted their general event permit yet. So we can hold this off until they do. But do we have any issues before they do, um, with them using King's Court? Um, you know, there was a, during COVID, we took a walk of King's Court. Um, because there were concerns about not being able to keep people far enough apart. So they kindly moved to their location for that year. And I believe we brought them back last year. Um, and so they're asking again for, um, this year to be back on King's Court.
Mr. Goldsberry, Goldsberry is on the, the meeting as well. He's the one that, that is, is making the request. I just wanted to let you know he was here.
Walter, do you want to say when the season begins and, and when it ends?
Yes, we actually, I submitted, um, electronically earlier, uh, the email to Deanna. Uh, earlier this afternoon, uh, the permit application. So we are set to commence May fourteenth, that Saturday. And depending on what goes on with the craft festivals and everything else, we're looking at an October, I believe fifteenth ending. Um, and that will be obviously every Saturday from eight to one.
As long as the, uh, the permit was submitted, I'm okay with it. And I think it's similar to last year as opposed to two years ago. So.
I would say maybe, maybe just the only comment I have is, and this came up in the past, whether Public Works can, um, arrange for, uh, uh, porta potties to be delivered. Uh, that would have to come, I, I think from the, the farmer's markets funds, the, um, Public Works, uh, you know, doesn't have the wherewithal to do that. And we no longer have the, uh, the location there that we've used in the past. So we've foregone that office.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't made that, um, request. I know that's been made in the past and there's been some discussion about, you know, public facilities and we can, um, you know, I'll, I'll bring that to the, the, um, the board's attention.
So Frank, were you requiring it as part of the approval?
Not requiring it, but it came up as a question to Public Works, whether we can provide it. I just want to clarify that we, we cannot provide it. It would have to come from the farmer's market itself.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners, are you, are you going to approve that moving forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Walter.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Walter. You're welcome.
Okay. All right, bye.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is to talk about an RFQ slash P, uh, whichever is more appropriate for field maintenance specialists. Um, so Commissioner Roche and I were, um, have been having various discussions with, um, some of the, the different youth organizations and with the school, um, some of the school.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Sharon. I have more event permit applications in front of me.
Okay, that's the ones I had listed. Deanna, did you provide other permits? You are muted.
I would have to look at what I sent to you. I thought that there were some other ones that were provided.
Here is what I have. I have Haddon Field Lions five K run, a Crows Woods October first. I have the Jonas Catell Run, um, sponsored by the, by Gloucester County, um, which goes from Haddon Field to Red Bank Battlefield. I have Families Behind the Badge Children's Foundation, the thirty-fifth Annual Bend to the Shore Bike Tour, which is the bike tour, um, that cuts down Haddon Avenue on its route. And I think that's it. That's all that I have.
You're running my, the memo I got. Okay, um, so.
And just put them on hold for next meeting if the guys didn't get them. Okay.
Well, no, they probably may have them in the packet, but I think it wasn't in, I don't, I go off of the memo I get, so I apologize for that.
No problem. I just didn't want to forget or say, or have the orgs think that we did approve or we denied them for some reason.
Yeah, just to talk about the, the Lions Club, um, one briefly. Kevin and I were having discussions, um, because as you'll remember, there were issues in twenty twenty-one. And we went back to them to talk about moving theirs to Sunday. Um, they weren't really happy about that. In discussions with Kevin, um, he brought up that at their last meeting, when we were trying to iron out the issues between, um, Lions and soccer for twenty twenty-one, it was, has decided that they were going to alternate days. So in one year, soccer would get Saturday, Lions would get Sunday, and the next year Lions would get Saturday, soccer would get Sunday. Um, so we said that, provided them back with that information.
Right. And, you know, we, we, that information was conveyed to the, uh, the contact at Lions. I have not heard from them with, uh, with whether or not they accept or agree to that. Um, but I, I guess, you know, with, with the request for October first, um, I'm given what the discussion was in the background. I am not in favor of it. The alternative date is October second.
Are, are you saying they, they did not coordinate or they're not adhering to the alternating the, the dates?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, and again, the discussion was, um, uh, the discussion was, uh, with myself, uh, Chief Cutler and, and representatives of both organizations. The race was on Saturday for twenty twenty-one. And it was discussed that we would have an alternating schedule. So the possession arrow goes to soccer this year for Saturday. And, um, and Lions, uh, the, the run will be on Sunday.
So we'll follow up then.
Commissioners, can I chime in for a second? This is Chief Cutler. I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Roche that it was difficult, uh, to run both events at the same time on the same day. Commissioner Roche is correct that the Lions should, uh, move theirs to Sunday this year. And, uh, if we could have alternating dates for public safety, it's in the best interest. Um, so that's just my two cents.
So we will come back to you, uh, if Lions, once things are worked out.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for the info. Thanks.
And then I think, real quick, if we could address the, the cycling one, I think because that comes up in June, that's correct. And.
Yeah, both the other two are actually fairly simple ones. It's one, one's a, just they put signs up along Haddon Avenue, which is the biking one. And then the other Jonas, they kick off, I think at King's Court and are in town for Jason, what, like five minutes, ten minutes?
Well, they, they bus people up to King's Court for the start and then they start King's Highway all the way down right to the end. So.
Yeah, it's not a big, it's not huge for us. It's, it's very simple.
The bike ride is June twenty-fourth, Kevin, and the Jonas Catell is not until October.
October, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Not October first, not October second, October twenty-third. Um, but yes, the Bike the Shore, um, tour is June twenty-fourth. And they are just looking for police assistance with traffic and crowds on Haddon Avenue, I believe.
Right. Typically, typically that's just done by the auxiliary police where the, uh, regular police don't even get involved. It, it's so quick that the, that the auxiliary police normally handle that for us.
Any concerns on your side, Chief? Like?
No, 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 they've been doing that for years. It's never been an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. So back to field maintenance.
So, uh, so are we approving that one or are we tabling it?
Good question. Do you guys want to approve both the, the Jonas Catell and the?
We're here. I, I, I think we can approve those.
Yeah.
Families Behind the Badge. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I would just say make sure Chief Cutler gets and, and lieutenants get the copies of the event permits, Deanna, when you have them. I know you might be out, um, the rest of this week, but we could just get them to the chief. So this way they could, in case there was anything that stood out, they could let us know. But otherwise, I'm in agreement with that, with both.
Not a problem. I believe that they do, do have them. I send the, I try to send them to, uh, the lieutenant when I get them.
Thank you.
Okay, um, back to field maintenance. So, um, you know, one of the issues that we have with our fields is over the history of them, um, Haddon Field didn't, you know, if that Haddon Field owned our fields, um, the youth organizations used to all maintain them. Um, there was, for example, a Centennial Field, you know, probably fifteen years ago, um, uh, football decided to stop putting money into it because it wasn't worth it on the field because the field was in such disrepair all the time. And, um, and then we put a new field down. Um, and we are being asked to maintain the field to a. And we are being asked to maintain the field to a condition, to a certain condition, including trying to get people not to use the field until the next season. And we have other ones who are, you know, trying and we, then we have youth organizations that don't put any money in. And we have other youth organizations that put a lot of money in. And then we have issues, you know, with the schools and their fields. And they used to have a specialist on board who retired a number of years ago, and then their fields have not been up to par as best they used to. And so we were meeting with the school to go over some other scheduling issues the other week. And I brought up to them the possibility of jointly going out and, um, looking for a consultant to come in and look at the usage of all of our fields and assist us with coming up with a plan as to what a, a good schedule for use would be with giving the opportunity for fields to be rested and changing those fields that got rested. And then also being able to come up with a maintenance plan that we could then potentially go out to bid for and have all of our fields maintained in the proper condition that they should be. So in that discussion, they were interested in possibly participating. They need to go back to the full board. I did reach out to their BA today and they have not done so yet. They're, they're asking for the, the formal document to be written up so that the board has it in front of them. I just want to bring this up before we spend time creating this formal document. I want to bring it to the three of you and find out if you're interested in doing this, um, before we look to move forward.
I guess the, the question I have, or I guess they, you know, the statement is that, you know, a consultant is someone you pay to tell you something you already know. I mean, do we, do we already know, you know, where the imperfections are and, you know, where the, the opportunities are with the scheduling? Or is this truly, you know, we need this person to kind of tell us what we don't know and, 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 you know, put a plan in place?
It's, it's a, it's a two-part thing, Frank. It's, uh, number one, you know, we'll talk about scheduling and, and trying to make it more equitable, I think, between youth sports and, and high school sports or sport sanction. There's kind of a tiered system that's going in there. And making sure that, again, for the, the, the numbers that you have. So trying to make sure that there is, is rest and then there's availability. Um, and being, being honest with it, I don't want, I, I think, you know, again, we get into this issue of someone has priority over another entity or someone's going to get bumped. You know, the, the rules haven't really been formalized or institutionalized. I think this does that. Number two, in terms of the maintenance, as Sharon said, you know, a part of our budget is, is maintaining a field for a group that, even though if they're a nonprofit, maybe they're generating more capital for, for expenditures. There should be a, a little bit of, of interest that's put back into the field if you're getting a use. You know, I, I know the, the school board had gone out with a usage fee, that they've charged on various levels that is supposed to be used for maintenance. You know, and this is kind of a, a similar thing in that regard of trying to do that. And then I think the third thing that we think about that's not really directly stated is that there's nothing been, uh, been formalized. I know, you know, we have the EPW come out or there's some sort of a, a grounds crew that's, they'll get to it when they can get to it. But I think if there's something that is, uh, through, through monies that are put in by, by these organizations, uh, creating some sort of in accountability or an outsourced group that can take care of all fields, not just borough-owned, but BOE-owned. And then there's a proper schedule of how these, these items get maintained. Uh, and making sure they all get maintained to that same level where, you know, it's not money's going into one set of fields and then because someone couldn't, couldn't schedule it properly, they missed out on an aeration and seeding. And then, you know, the next season they're telling whatever sport is or spring sport that, you know, they really shouldn't use this because it's not in the best interest of field. Well, it's not in the best interest of that individual group. So, you know, this all ties back into that, making things more equitable.
And, and I think also answered the question. Our fields are just overused. And so someone to tell us how to pull that back a little.
Right. A- a- and I mean, if you, if you think back to the, what was it, two thousand eighteen, you know, parks and recreation study. Uh, you know, I'm fine, you know, for someone to, to put a plan in place and stuff like that, but, you know, can we actually solve the problem or are we just kind of putting money at it? We're going to, you know, spend money and say, yep, you know, you just, you don't have enough fields, you know? You know, per the report four years ago, you need four more acres.
I guess the question is, um, you know, one of the biggest complaints that we hear all the time is we pay a lot of tax dollars and we pay on the worst fields around. You know, the question then comes, if, if you come up with a plan and you provide it to the different organizations and say, everybody's going to have to suffer a little pain to get those quality of fields. And here's the plan that's going to get you there. You know, it's, are, they are your fields. Do you want to put something in place that said, you know, put restrictions in place so that they are better? Or if, if we don't want to get to that point and address that issue, then, then we don't move forward with it.
I think for me, I'm in favor of, of moving forward with this because this is about capacity. It's about parity. And I don't pretend to know enough or nearly anything about field maintenance. I don't even yet have a child who's playing on our fields, but I have tons of friends whose children are. And, um, and I have a, a sister-in-law who coaches, um, women's or young women's field hockey in town. And so I've been hearing about this for years. And I think we as commissioners, I'm happy to admit when I'm not an expert in something and when our staff, despite best efforts, isn't necessary, or our volunteers aren't necessarily up to the exact challenger task at hand. So I think from my mind, this would be, um, number one, a good partnership with the school board. It would also create a united front and presence for parents, no matter what age your children are. Or for that matter, if you're, if you're without children and you enjoy the use of our fields or our public spaces. I mean, I think there's something to be said for creating that parity and that, um, ability for others. I think it also gives us tools to generate revenue, which we're lacking. So I look at this as maybe this is a spend upfront if we don't get a grant to fund, um, the professional itself. But then if we have the plan in place, it's a lot easier to go to orgs or to corporations or resources that we have in town and say, hey, here's, here's what we've developed to Frank's point, as an offshoot of what we did in twenty eighteen, here's something that carries this further. It gives us capacity building. It gives us planning tools. It gives us, um, potentially better fields, which, you know, if you look at Facebook posts and you listen to people on the sidelines or walking through town, this is one of those quality of life issues that gets brought up a lot. So I think it would be time and money well spent, particularly if we partner with the school board. And I will be honest, I don't know, I haven't spoken to school board membership about this, but without their buy-in, I, I don't know how successful it would be because then it, it calls into question who uses what and how we decide the field usage, since so many of our facilities are shared, if you will. So I, I would like to see a little bit more buy-in from, from the school board if possible, Sharon. But yes, I'm, I'm willing to move forward with drafting it. I'm willing to put work in on it. I think it's, I, I think it could be valuable to the whole community.
Yes, no?
Uh, I, I think if you, if you had to buy in the partnership with the school board, yes. You know, if, if not, I think you'd just be, you'd just be wasting money.
If, if there's not a buy-in from the school board, and, and again, this is, I think, what they want to see and then why they want to have this RFP, is to have this discussion. But if there's not a buy-in from the school board, then, you know, we'll, we'll keep, you have to kind of keep it as a status quo because, again, you know, we're looking at this as economies of scale. You've probably pay more separately than you would together. Um, and then this kind of helps create, if there's, i- if, if there's a usage fee or if there's an ability to, again, have some contribution for that maintenance fund that's not either the front of it or the onus isn't put on to, to the borough. But rather, you know, make it more equitable going forward. I think it makes sense.
So, so tonight's ask, if I'm getting this right, is
For the RFP.
Okay, so are we in favor of spending the time to draft the document to present to the school board to say, would you like to move forward with this? Is that correct?
Right.
Right.
Okay, so, so we could put some time and energy into it. And if they say no, then the three of us, it sounds like are same page. We're going to have to be status quo.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, appreciate that. Yeah. So I'm on board with, with spending some time on conceptualizing the RFP. Thank you.
All right, Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah.
I feel like my name is there. It is what it is. So.
All right, thanks. All right. Moving along, uh, the next item on the agenda is to discuss the advisory committee for the Board of Health. We brought this briefly up at our last work session. Colleen and I met to go over some of the questions that she had last time. And in front of you is, you know, basically the same document you had before, um, just a little cleaned up with a couple of things and, and pointing out the residency requirement. So if you guys are okay for this, I'll ask Sal to kind of draft this into an ordinance that we can then introduce and adopt.
Uh, yes, I'm okay with it.
Yep, I am too.
Okay. Great. Um, and then my last thing I would say is start to think of people that you know that might be able to fill some of these so that when we do have the ordinance, we can move forward with, um, filling the board.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is discuss the roof bids that came in astronomically high, which is almost anything anymore, um, in our world. You know, they came in almost two hundred thousand dollars or if not two hundred thousand dollars higher than we had estimated. So, um, we are obviously going to reject them. I did get to spend some time with R and B and go over making sure that it wasn't just something missing in the initial, um, estimates that we had. During that discussion though, it was brought to my attention that flat roofs, the, there's an insulation, there's a specific type of insulation that gets put down on them. That is six months to a year, um, for contractors to get that, that they, unless you're a really large corporation that has kind of been hoarding it a little bit, um, you can't have, you don't have access to it. So it does not make sense for us to go out for the flat roofs at this time, um, in my opinion. Because the other problem is, um, what I'm being told is, you know, when those contractors put their bid in, they're going to order the material and then the material's going to come in at a different price potentially. And then they're going to be coming back to you anyway, saying there was a price adjustment because of the, you know, the fact that their price was based on something different because you can't.
So they, so it's not like a, a fixed bid. It's cost plus baked into that type.
Potentially, yeah.
There, yeah, the, the friend of mine is a, is a roofer and, uh, actually we just had a discussion. He said pricing is up like a hundred to a hundred fifty-three percent. And the way he's quoting all jobs is, uh, materials cost is day of delivery.
Wow. So what we were going to do is he was going to reach out to a couple of other roofers that did not participate and kind of get a handle on the shingle roof stuff. We may just go out to bid for the larger shingle roof at Public Works. And the two smaller projects just get quotes for because it's, um, it can be dealt with a different size company. For the, for the two smaller, uh, shingle roof projects, one of them being the concession stand down at Crows Woods. So I should have that answered, but so we're going to reject all the bids and then have some, some version of the bid going back out, requesting to go back out on the twenty-eighth, if you're okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Jason. Wiring and stuff is up next. So we're going to talk about upgrading the wiring for Borough Hall. You asked us to, um, look at setting up the building for, so that people could participate via Zoom and in-person. We have been meeting with people to, to do that. Uh, Ja- I guess Jason, we did that in January. We met with a couple of different companies.
That's correct.
We got pricing to, one of the problems we have is, we have a, there is no hardwiring of the internet into the auditorium or the, um, even the, the, um, old count, the, um, courtroom downstairs, uh, or in any of our upstairs rooms, actually. So the, it's hard to, our, and our wifi is not very good or stable because you're trying to get through block walls. So it's not the best. So we were trying to at least getting the wiring adjusted because I know there are simple methods that we could do, even though we'd like to do a bigger, more permanent method, there are simpler methods to get us there. We at least need to do the wiring so that we can have a computer hooked up directly to our internet and have a steady stream so that we're not losing it in the middle of a meeting. And we have not gotten the proposals yet, correct, Jason? Because as of last time I talked to you?
No, I, I talked to the gentleman from Prime Video today and they're, they're still working on it. He apologized for the length, but, uh, we did get the, the estimates for the backbone, just the wiring, but not the, uh, the actual audio visual, uh, systems itself.
So we, we talked to a couple of different contractors, um, for pricing. One contractor said, uh, you know, gave us a price of, of over fifty thousand for, for the work or he really wanted to be an employee instead. Um, so we're discounting that one. We do have two other contractors that are giving us prices each for a different portion of the backbone. So the total cost for the wiring, um, comes to twenty, that, just, just under twenty-one thousand dollars to try and get the, the internet rewired through a very old building where we're having white mice issues, I think, in the wires.
That's correct. That, that, that includes the twenty-one thousand includes the wiring from the basement all the way up to three floors, every office and every, uh, office on the third and second floor. It also includes the wireless, um, access points to try to mitigate the problems that we're having right now. We only have basically two wireless access points, one on the second floor, one on the third floor, which, like, uh, Sharon said, it doesn't go through the, the old building. So that includes a couple other wireless access points on each floor to get better coverage.
So these are, you know, you're dealing with two different contractors and, um, they are, are quotes under the bid limits. So my question is, do we have authorization to go ahead and start moving forward with the wiring?
Can we see the proposal?
Absolutely. I'm sorry. Yes, I will get them to you.
That's okay. I would, I would like to see, see them, review them before making any decision. Thank you. But generally, I do think it's upgrades that we would be wise to make for a long-term investment. I'd just like to see what all is included.
This is also, uh, including for, um, future VOIP, uh, phone systems as well. They're going to wire the whole building, uh, so we can upgrade at a later date. It'd be cheaper upgrade now in case we, in the future feel like upgrading to a, a, a different phone system or think our phone system is ten or fifteen years old. And this would also lay the backbone for that as well. So you're kind of getting internet and phone at the same time.
Are they doing, uh, are they doing floor drilling and then putting in a chase or do we already have a chase? Maybe just run the wire through?
No, they're, they're, there's, they're doing both. Uh, there are some chases that we need to, to build. And there's some chases that, that already are in place. So it's, it's a combination of both.
Okay. Any chance there's, there's asbestos between the floors?
Well, there, there, there is, uh, there is a chance, absolutely. I know there, back in the eighties, uh, most of the asbestos in the building was mitigated. I'm not sure how. That was before my time, but there always is that, y- you know, uh, it, there could be. Not sure.
We have a report from two thousand and seven on inspection, sampling and analysis. We have a report from 2007 on inspection sampling and analysis of the asbestos containing building materials. So we might know that answer.
Okay.
I have I'll have to go back through it, but we this was done back in in 2007.
All right, so I'm sure they'll specifically exclude that, any sort of remediation or.
Yep. But yes, I will get you those copies of those proposals. If we're okay with them, we would like to go ahead and and get started and and move forward on that. Okay, so then the next thing to talk about is to talk about public meetings and masks requirements and stuff. Back at the end, very end of December, we went back to full masks in Borough Hall regardless of vaccination. Actually, in all of our buildings and all of our vehicles, if there was more than one person, why we were dealing with Omicron. And the governor has just announced, I guess, a week or so ago now at this point, that as of March 7th, schools are no longer required to have masks. So as they're putting those kind of regulations out and we are seeing Omicron start to decrease, I wanted to bring this back up for your review to see if you wanted to make any changes to our existing status quo, or if you wanted to wait and see if there's a, you know, to the end of March to make that decision to see if there's some kind of increase that occurs after the schools go maskless. Don't all talk at once.
Get away those options carefully. You know, and and I think it is a, it's it's a it's a personal issue. I think it's to that point. You know, I think you know, it's if people are comfortable not wearing masks, I think, and and again, we've seen this transmission rate under point five. You know, the hope is that it's getting better as as the weather improves. I'm I'm okay with it. You know, I I wear a mask personally. That's that's my preference. But if if people are vaccinated and they don't want to wear a mask in public, public building, that's that's fine. I'll leave it with giving giving the choice. How's that?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the, you know, the, you know, it tracked the trends. It's gone from the seven day average was 31,000 a month ago now down to 2,000. You know, I think that trend is going to continue. Uh, I am fine, you know, lifting the the mask mandate, you know, part and part and parcel with March 7th. So I think we've kind of instituted them in sync with, you know, with the state of New Jersey and probably want to do the same thing to uncouple it unless there's something unique that hadn't field. And I I just, I don't think that there is, given the information that I've seen.
Can I ask a practical question? When is our first meeting of the month of March?
Us personally?
Yeah, our commissioners meeting. I'm sorry, I don't.
Oh, it would be the 14th.
Okay, because selfishly, I maybe maybe out of town on Monday, the first Monday of the month or the Monday prior, and I wanted to be able to participate in our meeting regardless of where I was, if possible. So I'm I'm with both my fellow commissioners. I I think we would be. I think we will be good to to open to the public indoors. I think masks can and should be a choice for now. But I will reiterate, I know we just talked about wiring. We didn't make a decision there yet, but if there is any possible way to make things hybrid, I would really prefer, strongly prefer that because I really do think, I mean, you can see online tonight. We have a number of people who are clearly just listening on their phones and there's there's something to be said for that ability. And I also think it enables us as commissioners to pay attention to the other things that are going on with our various boards and commissions. So if there is any possible way to make it both and knowing that it might be very rudimentary, but if there is not, I'm still in favor of going back to in person.
So it was kind of two things. So Frank and Kevin both started off with just the mask portion. So you're okay with the mask being optional after March 7th, Colleen, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so then Frank and Kevin, Colleen took it to the next step, whereas, you know, as of March 7th, you know, meetings going back to in the building, potentially if we can get the wiring done and be able to put some rudimentary things in until we work the rest of the the package out, but you know, being able to be back in person.
Yeah, I I think the, even if it is rudimentary, just because the other thing I have to consider is that if people do have health risks or concerns and you can't have a quorum for any one of our, you know, commissions or committees, then we'll have an issue. So we have to be able to encourage people to be in person, but if they can't, we have to be able to, you know, still keep the the machine running here.
We will work on that. So we're good as of March 7th.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, the next item is to talk about, we need to set up some dates for interviews. We just with people going in different directions and by the time I would get dates, the other person's dates would be passed, so. If you could just give me your calendars as to when we can set some of those dates up, I would appreciate that. If you just want to send me, if you could kind of send that to me tonight, that way we can can get those interviews set up, I'd appreciate it. So that's the only thing under under that section. And then in talking about appointments, I was on the Shade Tree meeting this morning and we did have a member of Shade Tree that has resigned. We hope that she'll come back at a later date, but for right now, she has a need to resign. So we will have an opening there. They were starting to talk to some of the folks that are that already participate in some of their other volunteer like the the branch managers to see if there was anyone interested and and we've advised them of any of their folks that are interested to submit through the website so that you'll have their data when we bring this up next month.
Okay.
Okay, the next item to talk about, a couple of months ago, you talked about find it, I apologize. You talked about changing it so that the blue laws were no longer in existence and changing it so that there were not restrictions on sale on sales or who could be open or closed on Sundays. And so what I did is, Deanna, we, Deanna and I went through all of our codes to find out where those sections were and drafted a ordinance for your review, which you have, that does those changes. If you're okay with that, then we'll just have Sal confirm that it's in the proper form and then add that to your next meeting.
I was okay with that. It was an issue.
I'm okay with that.
So Sal, if you can just review that for the 28th, we'd appreciate it.
Will do. You got it.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is in noise ordinance. When our new solicitor came on board, he made us aware of the fact that our ordinance had to be approved by D E P. They then drafted an ordinance that would be acceptable by D E P and submitted it for their approval and you have it back in front of you. Do you have any questions or concerns about that ordinance? Before we put it on for introduction?
I I guess maybe you know, I think we've all heard complaints and have received them. I I know we've received emails and I've had some people, you know, reach out to me, but you know, the, you know, the way I read this, it it won't change the, you know, decimal levels associated with, you know, particularly leaf blowers is probably in the probable range there. I think it's like 95 to 115 is your average. I think it's within the acceptable level there per this ordinance. And then there is a a person in there, a noise control investigator. You know, who who would be that noise control investigator and that would that person be just inundated with, first of all, I think this is the, there's a right, the right ordinance to have and it's adopting a New Jersey ordinance, but is that person going to be just inundated with a lot of complaints about leaf blowers? And is it easy enough just to point to this and say that you know, leaf blowers are, you know, are your average leaf blower is going to fall within the range of everything that's drafted in here, so there's no reason for me to come out.
Sal?
Yeah, I mean, point points well well taken in in terms of the, we're we're fairly constrained in terms of the state and their approvals, so if you'd like me to, I can tweak it, I can adjust the decimal levels, I could eliminate that noise control investigator, the noise control officer and send it back to the D E P and see how how they respond. I'm open to doing that if you if you'd like.
To me, it just seems like the 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 you know, decimal level is marginal and, you know, are people going to be you know, insisting that our noise control officer show up with the proper equipment to test you know, three feet on the opposite side of their fence to see, I mean, I I just view this as just you're reaching preposterous levels by by some people and and I don't want to create more work for, like presumably Tavis or or someone in Chief Colors Department or or Sharon.
Plus, we'd have to go out and buy the piece of equipment.
Comes down to is it is it nuisance level or is it disturbance level? What's, you know, and that's the greater question. I think for myself, the other part was, you know, we talked about the just the Sunday rule and one of the questions that I had was was construction. You know, we have it set up here where it's, you know, in in item three, I think it was like we can, we have weekend hours that, you know, we we have to abide by. So I just wanted to really specifically address Sunday. You know, I know that there may be some some construction activity that is on on a Saturday. And I think those hours, I I remember going back years ago, Pennsylvania, we had something specific to a Saturday hour, there was a weekday hour, a Saturday hour, and then there was a Sunday hour, if there was even Sunday allowable based on on whatever county we were working at. You know, I think that that's something that I kind of want to see a little bit a little bit more information on that. Just, I think that has to be narrowed down. But yeah, I would, just like Frank, I went right to, all right, where's leaf blower, where's leaf?
We do already get complaints about that frequently. I feel like so.
Yeah, and I think I, you know, I think it was a large part of it's from the work from home. You know, I don't, I don't think it was a problem until people were made aware of it or it became an inconvenience for for that Zoom call. I don't, I don't know.
Yep. Okay, so do we have a homework assignment for Sal? That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah. Give me some. You want me, do you want me to, as I understand the comments, so noise control investigator as well as the weekend hours? You want me to more narrowly define those two? Anything else?
Well, Chris, I have a question for you. If we're going to have a noise control investigator, are we hiring someone?
I don't I I don't know if the problem is that pervasive that that would warrant an F T E to drive around town enforcing it.
And considering most of the complaints are going to come on the weekends and stuff when we don't have staff in, is this something, you know, that the police are going to get angry if we turn around and give them the piece of equipment? So, I mean, that's just, if you're going to have a title in there, we need to know how that title is going to be fulfilled.
Or or I can eliminate, I mean, again, this was the model ordinance from the state, so I could eliminate noise control officer, noise control investigator. And then Kevin, if I understand your comments, do you want me to 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 break? You want me to break it, break weekend, weekends into Saturday, Sunday and be more specific there?
I I think so. And I think that that was like page 11.
Yep.
Of the
All right, so I'll I'll tweak the weekends, I'll break that into Saturday, Sunday and then eliminate the references to the noise control officer, the noise control investigator. Then I then I have to resubmit it to the state. Is that a good start? And then if you guys think of anything, any other comments, just just call me or email me and we'll do it in the next couple of days.
Okay.
The only thing I would say is if what we would have to figure out, Sal, is if we take those titles out and who's going to handle the complaints? And is that something we can push over to the County Board of Health?
Wouldn't they get handled like they currently do now when someone calls in with a noise complaint?
Yeah, I I.
Which happens all the time.
I mean, the definition right now of noise control investigator does does refer to an employee of the municipality or county or regional health commission. So it's broad enough as written now that it it could go, it could bounce over and roll over to a county, county health, yes. And the same thing for the noise control officer, so.
Because I think they have the the piece of equipment.
Yeah. So as as, or I could simply eliminate municipality and just refer it to the county or
Okay.
Is that is that the preference? I'll I'll leave the the references to the N C O and the N C I, the officer and investigator, but just eliminate the reference to a municipal employee and leave it as a county employee?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Okay. And then I'll redefine the Saturday, Sunday, break that up.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we'll resubmit. As I said, next couple of days, if you all think of anything else, just let me know and we'll get it out in a couple of days.
So then that comes off as introduction or first reading for the 28th.
Yeah, I I don't, I I will be shocked and surprised if if we were to hear that quickly back from the state. I I would be hopeful if you want to leave it on and we could always table it as we get closer, but just given past experience, I I don't know we'd have approval that quickly. But we can leave it on.
I'm fine with taking it off.
Yeah, however you like.
I agree. I don't think there's any way they're getting back to us by that time, so I'm fine with taking it off.
Just before we move forward on anything else, Carly, I just wanted to let you know your event was approved.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I apologize that I was late. I don't even really have a good excuse except that I have young kids. And but I did email Deanna in background to say like, hey, did I miss it? But I heard that, so I really appreciate that. I am here for any questions if you have them right now.
Yeah, we're good.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Carly.
Thank you, Carly.
Okay, if there's nothing else on the noise ordinance, the next item is to talk about the agenda for 2028, 21. Just have to grab mine. Just grab it up real quick. Okay, so we will take that ordinance off. We have the cap bank ordinance on, which just allows us to to, it's a it's a financial. Ordinance on which just allows us to to, it's a it's a financial. It's one of the things we do with the budget every year and we will be talking about budget in the next couple of weeks. Um, but it is, it mostly just allows us, we have an automatic bank every year. That we can, or or there's an automatic cap every year as to how much our appropriations can go up. And by, but then there's a, we can do an ordinance which allows us to go up even slightly higher. So the state sets a COLA. Based on some very. Unique methods that they that they choose as to what that coal is going to be because it's, they set. Uh, this year's at at two and a half, which we all know that inflation last year was not two and a half percent. But so we are allowed by ordinance to take that number up to three and a half. Uh, and that's what we are proposing to do. It just, we bank it, it sits there for two years if we don't use it. Um, it's just there in case for some particular reason in one year. We have to increase our expenses that are inside the cap. Um, because you're starting a new program or something else and and we need that extra room that. We wouldn't have by the general, general percentage increase we're allowed to increase. So we just kind of bank it so it's there should we need it. Um, that's basically all it is. It's just, it gives you a mechanism to have some flexibility as the years go on. Um, so, oh, the you have a an ordinance on um. Loading zones, this was over on Springfield, we had something specifically set up for some residents that were there. Um, Jason can probably provide you more specifics on that, and those residents are no longer there, so we are, we've removed the signs already. And now we're just taking that loading zone officially off the books. Um, so that it's not there on the books. That's all that that ordinance does. We have three, four grant. Um, resolutions that are on there. We just submitted one grant uh for a sustainable. New Jersey project, which was in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Um, we'll be putting that ordinance or that resolution on the twenty eighth. And then submitting that along with the grant that's already been submitted. That's to try and start up a a new composting. Um, project through our Sustainable and Environmental Group. Um, it's a countertop program. We also have grants for, uh, there's an energy. Um, program through D P for ten thousand dollars. Um, we are going to be submitting for a stop the soot grant. Uh, which does not need a resolution, but that is for electric trash trucks. And also, um, all of the equipment to uh for charging of those. And um, some other equipment that's needed to keep data, uh, track of data on them as we go through. And then also, um. We have a another sustainable grant that we're going for, which is one of the action items is the Gold Star for Health. Um, we're hoping to try and go for, and there is a grant to get technical advice to walk through some of. Or technical assistance to walk through some of those action items. Uh, that's only going to be awarded to one person, so we're going to put in for it. I'm not sure we're really going to get it. Um, but we are going to put in for it. Um, we have also the C D B G uh funds are, those grants are due March fourth also. Um, Colleen and I have been talking about how what we might put in for that. Um, so as soon as we get a handle on that, we'll let you know exactly what we're looking to put in for that. But that is also due on March fourth and needs a resolution. So all of those resolutions we've lumped into the twenty eighth so that we have them. To put in with the applications, um, and there'll be more specifics by the twenty eighth and and in what is being included. Um, so all of those are on there. Um, we are rejecting, we also are going out to bid for trees. Um, we have, it's either going to be two bids or three bids. Bill and I were going back and forth whether it really needed to be three different bids. Um, one of the bids is going to be for the removal. Uh, if you'll remember, last year we went out to bid two or three times for tree takedowns and. The pricing just kept getting worse and worse. Uh, you know, it was by the end, it was more than double the price per tree that it we had used uh in the prior year. And it was just, you know, beyond what the budget budget was there uh each time, so. Um, and these are all trees, even though uh we are, we have this great big push by Public Works right now to take down more trees. Um, they can only take trees down up to a diameter of twenty-four inches around. And these are trees that need additional people in the crew or need cranes. Um, and so we are going out to bid, there was forty-one on total on the list for last year, we're going out for twenty of them this year, right now. Um, and then, you know, the idea is to award that twenty no matter what, because that will be in the budget. Um, but then we can use that number that as we continue to manipulate the budget. Uh, we can see how many more we can push to try and get down of this of these larger trees. And then the program that we have going on right now at Public Works, uh, they are stalking the trees. So we have been going out to bid in past years to remove those stocks, and we've been also going out to bid to remove the stumps. Um, and so that's all the rest of the bids that are going out. We do have a number of stumps that are not associated with stocks currently. And so that's the question Bill and I have going back and forth as to whether we have that those as a separate third bid or they get included with the stocks and. Stumps of the other bid.
Those are for the twenty twenty-one stumps and stocks only, right?
Correct, they are not this year. So what we're doing is getting cleaned up through before this project. And then coming in May, we will go back out for stumps and stocks for all of the trees that they've taken down in February, March and April. So you're in the tree.
It is.
It's a good thing. I think the big headline in both our papers is going to be stumps and stocks.
Is there any questions on the agenda?
And I would like to take a moment to to point out that there are um a number of minutes that are on this agenda for approval. I sent them out last week. If you guys could review those and get back to me by midweek next week. Um, with any changes or comments or anything like that that you'd like. Uh, I would appreciate that. Give me a chance to to get them cleaned up. Prior to the meeting.
Thanks, Deanna. That's great. Like nine sets of minutes. Good job.
Thanks.
Does anyone have anything else before we talk about closed session and open to the press?
Nope.
Uh, I do have a quick one, the um. Guess two quick ones. Uh, one is for Sal, the um. The small uh parcel property adjacent to the property on Lake. Um, I know there's seventeen properties in town, but I think we're just going to narrow it down. Can we just? Do we have approval and next steps to send that out to adjacent properties and see if anyone wants to acquire it?
Lake or the one on King King's Lane, I thought.
King's Lane, you're right.
Okay, that's, yeah. Could I, yeah, could I reach out to the uh? Adjourning homeowner to see if anybody wants it?
Yep, uh, yeah, just make sure that the the person who uh started the conversation is contacted as well.
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, but just, I I'm fine just doing that one for now as a one-off because he is the only person asking.
Okay.
And then I know before we were talking about the uh, the basketball hoop and we um on um. Farrier. Um, do we have a next step on that, not pressing issue now or limited only to basketball hoops, or I think we. You know, time is running out on getting back to the homeowner.
I believe Commissioner, at the last meeting, it was determined that. Approval was not going to be given. For it to stay there.
Okay.
I. I thought, and I could be wrong, I thought that we, I sent an email. Saying, after discussion with a staff member of some of the. Similar, similarly situated residents and or complaints received or pictures utilized to say this is what I want. In my yard as well. Um, I I sort of just opined as to, hey, this made me think about this differently. Can we talk about this again or or? Make a note of it. And I could be, again, I apologize, because this was like. In the haze of January, that was Omicron in our household, but um, that's my recollection that I. Because I had a conversation within the construction office with my staff about. You know, how common is this? What are some of the other issues you're seeing, if any? How many complaints do you get? How many calls do you get about this? And how many times do people ask you to do this? So we know if we're opening the floodgates or not. Um, so that's where I thought we left it, because I think I circulated that email saying, hey.
Yep, you may.
There's some more information.
Yeah, and I had it. I had it as. With regards to, did you want to look at something on a on a traffic pattern to make it a case by case study? One of the the issues I think that. We had raised was the fact that this this no longer really becomes something for this neighbor. This is something that becomes public domain that they are responsible for. So, you know, the benefits transfer because. You know, playing, playing ball in that street on this structure. Falls into a a public area or an area that is not deemed uh the. The the owner, the the homeowner. Um, and then, you know, there had to be a question about responsibility and accountability for the uh. You know, we we. Were not liable for anything that happens to anyone. That's something at the homeowner level. So, you know, I thought we were also going to ask them how they feel about that. And and if that's something that we want to go to, as as Colleen said, is this something that we want to address? Going forward, where if there's a. At what point is the traffic pattern? Deemed. Enough or not enough? What sort of is the is the owner willing to give up? Any recourse or or rights to that ownership but still maintain the liability of maintaining that structure? That's, that's what I had.
I I have, I have a pretty basic question too. I mean, uh, because my other concern about this was. And I think I I might have communicated this in a meeting. I don't, again, I apologize. But but essentially, what happens if and when these kids outgrow the basketball net or the neighbors think it's a nuisance? And now we have. Meetings full of neighbors complaining. Do we have a threshold for? Now you got to take the basketball net out. Or or once you get it, is that it? And no matter how much more traffic comes on your street or who lives next door to you. Um, we, you know, we're all in. Because it comes up in the construction office because people who have gone for other approvals. Whether it's before zoning or just the zoning, like the board or the zoning officer, will bring in. Examples and say, hey, look what my neighbor did, or look what the person on X Street did. I want to do the same thing. Um, at what point then are we misleading residents and or are we creating a number of headaches for ourselves before? You know, so my 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 initial response would be. It's a, we're we're opening Pandora's box of problems that seemingly mundane, and maybe this doesn't happen that often, but I I'm told at least four or five a year. Get requested and are told no. Which tells me in five years, that's twenty-five people, give or take, that were told no, they couldn't have what we're giving someone else. I I know how many emails that will generate for me, and it's probably closer to fifty or more. So how do we, I I just need to feel comfortable with. Number one, if this is that important to that, to the particular homeowners, are they willing to come talk to us about it and agree to things? Um, and and, you know, speak to. And or be willing to answer questions, particularly even of their own neighbors. We don't know if they're in support of it. Um, because it is the public right of way, and it impacts the people directly adjacent to them, regardless of traffic. So that was one of the thoughts I had, because I know they wrote a letter, which I appreciate. But I haven't had the opportunity to speak to them. They haven't, to my knowledge, come to any meetings to ask permission or forgiveness at this point. Um, and I think we spent a lot of time and energy on this when. They broke a rule, so um, I I want to treat them fairly and as a constituent in good faith, but I also want to be sensitive to the fact. This becomes an issue in one of my offices, and it's it's annoying. It rises above annoyance for the staff and it becomes an enforcement issue. And it becomes a, um, you know, there there are some residents that take it to the level of accusations of. Um, you know, favor favoritism or treatment of of individuals. Um, and and if we, you know, pretend we didn't know the rules and put it in, we're better off. Than if we had come to you and asked to do it the right way, and I certainly don't want to give that impression. So I don't know what you guys think. I know we talked the first meeting about potentially developing a policy. Um, and I was originally in favor of that, again, because Commissioner Troy raised traffic. Um, and you know. Frequency of travel on the street and safety concerns. I know the chief evaluated law, I know Sal evaluated law. I know Kevin had the liability concerns, Commissioner Roche, so. Um, at this point, I I think I, I'm just, what are we opening ourselves up to? And and I I'm not necessarily comfortable with saying yes, given that I already know people have come in the construction office. Using this one as an example for, hey, I want one of those too.
So Commissioners, what do you want? Me to do?
So the the homeowner has said he would attend a meeting, he would present his case and um, you know, has no problem doing that. You know, I I don't have a problem with the. With the the basketball hoops, you know, in general, but it would be the same, you know, you would have to have requirements that if you're putting it in place, that has to be. Maintained and, you know, and look, you know, orderly and. If it doesn't become that way, it has to be taken down. And then there also, you know, would have to be waivers associated with it, saying that, you know, you own. Any sort of damage done to it or to a UPS truck that drives by and gets a dent in it and they hit you up for it. I mean, it you basically. You know, they would be, it it would be, you know, their responsibility, their property, and they have to be drafted accordingly. And and I think they would have to be in very limited cases on very low traffic areas. And, you know, my street, for example, wouldn't, I wouldn't consider it for a second on my street.
Frank, would you consider asking, I mean, like, I just think of like block parties where we make people get permission from or um. You know, support of all their neighbors. Would you consider requiring neighbor support of it? Because again, I know, I know having the neighbors. Um, on in where we have basketball nets in our driveways, and I have a shared driveway, so. Um, we're always, you know, looking to each other to work together, but if. If you have a neighbor put one in and you think it's not lawful, and suddenly their kids are outside or the the adults are outside. Playing constantly, like how how? I'm just wondering how we handle that, because that's going to come next. And so do we ask? Do we ask someone who's asking for permission or forgiveness, hey, did you get the support of your neighbors? And obviously, homeownership is going to change, but um, I feel like that's almost a courtesy you owe neighbors, because we we talked about noise earlier and. If you have really active kids or teens, basketball nets can be really popular at night.
That would be fun, taking that approach too. I mean, I I I think it's worth a a conversation. Some somehow there has to be. Some sort of de nouveau with this that.
Yeah.
You know, uh, because he's coming up against, he has to pay a fine or do something or take it down, or I think we have to just provide. You know, some sort of path that you you know, you you got to play it or trade it.
Yeah. So. What do you want us to do?
And and as you're contemplating that, if I recall from the last uh meeting, there. Tavis had communicated an extension informally of thirty days, and then we might be coming up to that thirty day extension, so if you want to. Bring in another thirty days and have have the residents um come to a meeting, just sort of bear that in mind as well.
I'd be fine with doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would do that. I think. I, I would do that. I think here's. Here's my thought about. You know, the, the, I don't think, I don't think it's really at the approval of the owner. It, we're either. It's either going to, the decision has to be with us. So, you know, I, I think having the approval of, of the neighbors, if they're in favor of it until they're not. I, I don't think that really does the, you know, really addresses the situation. You know, the fact is there's someone who put something in. That, you know, they didn't follow the protocol and, you know, and that's. I guess I would like to know why, number one. And number two, I'd like to know what sort of, you know. What sort of actions are they willing to, to go through to keep a basketball hoop? In other words, assuming all responsibility and liability. You know, because this, this is something that happens. And if I don't feel comfortable with the answer, my answer is no.
So. Invite them. 14th meeting to come and talk to us guys. And I just emailed Tavis to extend it another 30 days.
Okay, and they'll get a decision that night, I think. I think we've spent a lot of time on, on this.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and I wasn't thinking of the neighbors in the case where it already happened. I'm thinking when we talked previously about like a policy. You know, you know, the people, just like a land use application, you got to let people within 200 feet know what you're doing for a reason, so. You know, the land use geek in me is. Trying to comport this in some way.
But, but it already happened, so it, it just seemed like.
Right, right. No, no, in this case, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Commissioners. Public comment was already at the beginning of the meeting. So I think at this point you're asking for, are you opening it up to the? Papers to the, to the news reporters?
I see Emily and Bethany. So yes, before we go into closed, if they have any questions for us. Now's the time.
I saw that this meeting was recording. I was just wondering, will it be available anywhere afterwards?
Yes, we are going to have it available on our YouTube channel and we will get that out to everybody once we've uploaded the meeting.
It's exciting. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Bethany, do you have anything?
Nope, no questions from me tonight.
Okay.
Thanks, Bethany.
Commissioners, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Sure, motion to go into closed session.
Do I have a second?
Again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then, thank you, public. We are going to go into closed session.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Jason, you staying on?
He's probably stopped paying attention.
Yeah, I'm just going to push him out.
We'll take five minutes for our personal comfort breaks here.
Yes.
Be back.
What are we discussing in closed?
By the way, I would stop the recording after this.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you as a reminder.